It is 6:30, so I will start this meeting. The mission statement for the Lake Mills area school district is preparing all of today's students for tomorrow's opportunities. For verification of meeting notice, has this meeting been properly posted?
Yes, it was posted on the LMASD website and at the Lake Mills post office, Lake Mills library, Bank of Lake Mills, and submitted to the Lake Mills leader.
All right, thank you. Then, at that point, I will call this meeting to order, and I would invite everyone that is able to stand and say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
I request a roll call meeting for attendance.
Brianna Besleck?
Here.
Andrea Graham?
Can she hear us?
I can't hear. It shows that the other people on the screen are muted.
Here now, thank you.
There you go, I'm sorry.
Andrea Graham? Roll call?
Here.
Kirk Lund. Amy Letcher.
All right. Moving forward, are there any revisions to the agenda? All right. Hearing none, I would propose, one, that during the presentations, during 3A, during the presentations from UA and Findorf, if there are any clarifying questions from the public, that they can ask those at that time. So, does the board approve that?
Yes.
Okay. So, do we need a motion to approve that revision?
I think you have the ability, because it's not a change in policy, it's just opening the forum.
All right, then that's what we will do. All right, moving on to Mr. Ken Imers, the clerk of correspondence.
Thank you. The board has received three very nice thank you notes. The first thank you note is from Barb Picard, the special education para educator. "Thank you so much for the gifts to celebrate my retirement. Your thoughtfulness is greatly appreciated. Sincerely, Barbic Picard." The second thank you letter is from Joanne Russo. Joanne is a former third grade teacher. "Tanya, thanks so much for the plant in the honor of my sister. I truly appreciated the time allowed to spend with family. Jeannie was a champion of the underserved kids. She was my oldest sister, who was very dear to me. Thank you again, Joanne." And the third thank you letter is from the family of Cal Vogel High School principal. "Thank you very much. During a time like this, we realize how much our friends and relatives mean to us. Your expression of sympathy will always be remembered. The Vogel family."
All right, moving on to 3A, administrative report from Ms. Tasha Naylor.
Good evening. I have a quick update tonight regarding our audit and some of our 21-22 financials. So, about two weeks ago today, our auditors were here from Whitfleet. So, on the 25th, they were able to conduct the audit and wrap up in just one day's time, so that was efficient and nice that they were in and out. This is our third year working with Brian Anderson at Whitfleet, and we've been very happy with the services from both him and his team, and the relationship that we've built over the years. So, per our board policy, we should go to bid for auditors no less than every three years and no more than every five years. So, this being my first year with Whitfleet, I'd like to, if you don't have any objectives, I'd like to continue with them for the next two years, bringing us up to that five-year point. I did add today, and I also gave you a handout, what our bid outcome was from 2020. So, there is five different auditing firms, and you'll see that Whitfleet did come in as the low bid, excuse me, then. So, with your permission, like I said, I'd like to continue with them for the next two years, given the experience that we've had with them. And we have time, if you object to that, we certainly have time to discuss that, since we're just starting our next year. So, that wouldn't happen until beginning of 2023 that that process would even happen. So, we can certainly talk about it more, if you'd like. Okay. Moving on to 21-22 financials, so I am pleased to report that we did end the fiscal year of 21-22 with a surplus of approximately $450,000. So, those numbers will wrap up once the audit is fully complete. You know, if you'd like, I can get you that more exact number. That's where we're about, with a few maybe journal entries here or there, but nothing too extreme. So, that is a big win, considering what we're coming into for the 22-23 school year of a deficit. So, that is a plus. And this is mostly due to decrease in staffing costs. We had a lot of in-house subbing, so those, as you know, with staffing being 80% of what our budget is, some swings there can really adjust things. So, it's really about 2.5% of our overall budget. The other piece was our transfer from Fund 27, which is our special ed fund, was less than we had expected as well. So, that plays a factor into that surplus that we weren't necessarily expecting, so. Right now, I'm in the process of doing reporting to DPI, so all that state reporting. So, our annual report is a fiscal report that we do every year, and we have, all of our expenditures and our revenues are reported over to DPI, as well as all the special ed, food service, all those reports are happening, and those are going to impact our general aid certification this next year, as well as our maintenance of effort. And that maintenance of effort is a calculation for special ed, basically making sure that we're spending the same amount on special ed every year, and we don't fluctuate too much for that. So, there's a bunch of tests that are done, and these financial reports are part of those tests, to make sure that we're staying compliant in that spending for special ed. And then, just one other little small piece, DPI is moving towards a completely new way of doing the reporting for finance. It's going to something called Wise Finance, and basically, that's going to be, all of our data is going to be pushed daily, and they're in the process of transitioning into that right now. So, we're doing kind of dual reporting this year. We're doing all of our reporting that way, as well as the old way, for this next year. And it's not terribly important, but just kind of something that's going on in the business office, that we are kind of transitioning with DPI. And that is all I have.
Are there any questions?
I was just going to say, I appreciate you sending us the previous bid summary, because that was very helpful to understand where they fell within the line, and not just because you're the lowest means you're the best, but to know with the upcoming budget what that could mean for us is important. But I think, like you said, those relationships are important, and they know how we operate, we know how they operate, and sometimes that can just make it run even more smoothly. So, yeah, thanks for sending that.
Does the new system reduce your, when you finally get just on the new system, past the parallel piece, does it help your workload? I mean, is it streamlined?
I think that's the idea, yes. I think it'll help with everything. There'll be some reports that will go away, but it does prevent, or it does add some new challenges with keeping everything kind of up to date from day to day, and making sure things push, but it really shows us where we might have an error, and we fix it right away, as opposed to waiting. So, I think, once everything's through, and Tanya can attest to this, I'm pretty good every month about getting everything right anyways, and I'm kind of, maybe a little too much over the top about it, but it's something that I do anyways, but it's going to help those things that you don't catch necessarily.
Good.
And, just, I have a question or clarification. From this audit bid summary, back to the auditor, this Whitfleet LLP, they came in at the low bid rate of all the different, the five different auditors?
Yes. And prior to that, we were with Baker Tilly.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, hearing no other questions, I will move on to Dr. Tanya Olson's report.
All right, I'm just going to give a quick summary. You've probably seen some new faces here at the board meetings and in our buildings, so we've had several administrative changes. The exciting thing is, a lot of the administrative changes have been internal transfers, where people have been able to move up in the organization. So, here tonight, we have Chuck Olson and Wendy Salam, our new elementary and our new middle school principals that we've introduced in the community already. Aaron Siechlag was able to move up into the district office position, and Jamie Eversen was able to move up into the district office position with two departures, with some district level administrators, one going to a neighboring district and one going into the private sector, which also opened up an opportunity for Mr. Dom Gischa, who's been working very hard on his, not only his administrative license, but also was our summer school coordinator, and had stepped in as an interim assistant principal several times at the high school level. He will now be our assistant principal at the elementary. It's a little shift in job titles from Jamie Eversen's dean of students position to that assistant principal, and the main change was to allow this new position to also be able to do teacher evaluations. Our elementary school is our largest school in the district with the largest staff. That was a lot of evaluations to put on one person, and I know Dom was welcomed with open arms by the staff at the elementary. Everybody was pretty excited about that shift. He's got a lot of energy. Finally, we have Brad Mosier that moved into the new director of transportation, and, boy, the changes are really noticeable. He's been able to recruit some new bus drivers, which is a near miracle when the bus driver shortage is so rampant across the state, and you can see the advertising that we've had in town, and so that's been a great addition as well, or I should say, change. So, just a couple new faces here in the community, and I just have a plethora of experience. I'm excited about the wealth of knowledge that this team is able to bring to Lake Mills. So, with that, I am going to introduce our team here that we've been working with for quite a while, past, I think back, a year and a half at least, on this potential referendum. And so, tonight, we have with us Kit Daly from UA, Eric Dufek from UA, and Peter Sandin from Findorf, and online, we have Brian Brewer, who is working with us with Baird Financial. So, together, they are going to facilitate this presentation. Some of the information you're going to see is not new information, but there's going to be some new information. As we had promised way back in May, we would keep updating what we were working on. We were going to look at construction prices, interest rates, and we kept our eye on that all summer long, and here we are at the final leg of that journey. So, Kit, I will let you take the presentation away.
Sure. Well, glad to be here again. My name is Kit Daly with UA. We've been working with you guys now for almost a year and a half on this phase of your long-range master plan. So, we're excited. Tonight's a big night. You guys are going to finalize and adopt resolutions to formally get on the November ballot. So, we're here to make sure that you're feeling comfortable and confident about everything that you're taking action on. So, as a team, we're here just to review that with you and make sure you understand what is coming next, once you go forward with this action tonight, because there's a lot more to come in terms of communications and outreach. But tonight, we just want to make sure that we are grounded in the what we're doing and the why we're doing it. So, that's why we're here, as an update. I think we can move ahead. Just, we're going to quickly...
Go ahead.
Okay. There's another slide or two. We're good. Oop, there you go. We're, just to kind of break it down, what we're going to do. First, we're going to review the facilities plan, the proposed plan. We're also going to talk about the operational needs of the district, because we're going to have two questions on the ballot, which is the first time Lake Mills will have that, a facility question as well as an operating question. Want to make sure you understand that. Brian Brewer from Baird is online. He's going to talk to you about the financials, impact of that. You will then review the ballot resolutions that you will take action on subsequent to our presentation, and then we'll just briefly hit on some communications highlights and next steps. Okay. So, this entire project has really been based off and built off your strategic plan, which Dr. Olson worked you through last year. And so, specifically, the third pillar, aligning resources with needs, is very much in keeping with this project and how it fits into your strategic plan. The need to increase space at your elementary school and prepare for the future is really what this project is designed to help you address. It is part of your long-range facilities plan, which, as you know, as a board, has been a long time, a lot of work that you've been doing consistently over the years. Go ahead and flip to the next slide. You have had a phased approach to addressing your facility needs. There's been a multitude of projects along the way, and this project is the next step in that. It was projected and anticipated when we did the elementary school back in 2012, that you would need a fourth building of some type and kind as enrollment continued to increase, and that's exactly where you're finding yourself here in 2022. So, with that context, we're going to talk to you now about the proposed plan that you're going to be taking action on. This is an enrollment and projection chart. This is not a new chart. We've been looking at this now for months. We shared this openly with the community in May, and then throughout, through a special mailing to the community that went out, as we've been trying to help people understand the space needs at the elementary level and the capacity, and there's been a little bit of a shift there in that capacity, as you've changed your class size focus. And the reality is, is that we need to make more room for kids in Lake Mills immediately and for the years to come. So, this solution is really designed to help you do that. So, in a nutshell, we've also created this kind of graphic to help you understand where your current configuration of your buildings are. You obviously have Lake Mills Elementary School, which is really supporting 4K through four, at least half of the 4K. We have the middle school for grades 5'8", the high school 9'12". We also have two additional spaces in the community that have been used consistently for instructional programs, Head Start and the other half of 4K. That's a little bit unusual, that communities would consistently be using those spaces. So, there was definitely a goal to try and bring your programs back into the district. So, the future proposed plan is really to bring a fourth building online, and that would shift your grade levels, so that the elementary school would shift to serving 4K through grades two. The new school would be for grades three through five in that intermediate level. Grade six through eight would be at the middle school. That relieves some pressure at the middle school level coming down the road, and then you will continue to have the 9'12", the building project that was just finished a few years ago, created additional capacity. So, we're confident that you're going to be comfortable there at that high school for many years to come. So, that's a little bit of a snapshot. My colleague Eric is going to talk you through the site plan.
So, we have simplified a few of the bullet points. We've gone over this site plan in a number of presentations now, from a kind of high-level preliminary perspective. The intermediate school, we've got located kind of on the northeast corner of the site, and we've got space around the building for future additions. The intent is that, as enrollment grows in Lake Mills, that this building can be added on to over the years. The site is large enough for that. It works well for that, as opposed to the existing elementary school site. There'd be locations for playfields, for a geothermal field similar to the elementary school. It's a very energy-efficient way to heat and condition the building. And then, we've got a separation of parent traffic with bus traffic. We want to make sure that the site is safe for the students and also safe for the vehicle traffic. The extension of Unseaven Lane would be a project that the city would be taking on for the construction of that road. The school district will be paying a portion of that road construction, along with a portion of whatever improvements are going to be required at the intersection of Highway 89 and Unseaven Lane. That's all things that are being worked on, kind of with the city and the DOT. The sidewalks are going to be extended to the site, so for the students, there'll be access, should there be students taking bikes, along with the existing bike path would get extended to the new intermediate site. So, there would be means of access for students beyond the parent and bus access. Again, the building would be designed initially for that 450 students, with possibilities for additions in the future, and we would expect it to be a two-story building, again, keeping with the concept of energy efficiency. So, along with any type of building project, there are cost estimates and a cost estimating process that goes with that. So, with that, I'll introduce Peter with Findorf Construction.
Thanks, Eric. As a reminder, before we get going on the budgets, we've probably seen this slide and some other things before, but this is a conceptual estimate. Right now, we're looking at some ideas of how big the building is and square footage, which we've worked with the UA on, and what the vision for the district is, as well as what the property looks like. So, it's very much based on a conceptual scope and an estimated square footage. It's consistent with similar projects we've done, but also taking into consideration some of the inflation and the market numbers we're seeing currently, which we talked about in May, and we'll get to just a minute. It's not detailed estimate, and we have detail behind it, but it's not detailed saying, this is exactly how much this is going to cost, because it still needs to be finally designed. It's also not inclusive of operational costs. That would be a separate question, a separate issue that the district is handling on their own. So, with that, let's look at the numbers as a similar breakdown, as you've seen before. You can go to the next slide. When we met in May, we talked about how, over the last six to eight months, numbers had been increasing across the industry for material and market volatility, some of the supply issues we've seen. And so, at that time, we worked with the district and the admin teams to say, let's take a break, let's see where things are trending over the next three months, which was June, July, and August. And that's what we've done here. You can see over the last three months, and when we started in May, we were in the $42 to $44 million range for this school. Like I said, that is inclusive of the school and the work on the site, and some of the costs that the district will have to account for, like furniture and such like that, not operational, obviously. But the 42 to 44, one note is, we're rounding, right? We don't have it that dialed in. It's a number, and then we round up a little bit. And so, why that makes a difference is, as we started looking over the next couple of months, it did creep up a little bit. It crept up a little bit on the high end, it also crept up on the low end, but because we're rounding, it didn't ever get over 42. It just kind of rounded up to 42, and we're eating into that rounding. On the 45 side, we're in the 44 range, and it started to go above 44, and so we're rounding to 45 right now, and that's the range. What we've seen over the last three months in the industry, we have seen some prices be more leveled off. We've seen a few that have gone up, and we've seen a few that have gone down, depending on the industry and the material. So, that's good news, that we are seeing this trend, and we just had some bids in last week that we were looking at before we finalized these numbers, and a lot of those were stagnant from before, especially some of the normal numbers, some of the important numbers we see, like the mechanical, electrical, plumbing, and fire protection numbers, were staying still in our trends. So, with that, I'll let Kit get back to it.
All right. So, a lot of that is just reminding you where you've been, right? And what you've been studying and researching and evaluating and talking to your community about. In May, we had a series of community meetings to bring people together, and that helped guide your final planning. So, ultimately, tonight, where you have come to is that what you are requesting on the ballot is you take actions. You know, you're going to be doing the legal action of this shortly, but you are requesting permission to borrow up to $44 million to fund the construction of this new grade three through five intermediate school on district-owned land, specifically off Highway 89 and Unseaven Road. So, that, in a nutshell, is what you're asking for. You cannot exceed that $44 million once voters have given you approval to do so. This cost includes, as Peter said, all the construction, all the site work, all the site improvements, furniture, fixtures, equipment, services, permits, all of that is all-inclusive in that budget. So, the first recommendation from the team is for you to move forward with that as part of your ballot resolution. The second one is also for the district to put forward an operational referendum question, which is requesting permission to exceed your existing revenue limit on a recurring basis or on an ongoing basis for each year thereafter, for up to $950,000 each year. And that is really to fund the ongoing operations and maintenance associated with bringing a fourth building online. You are bringing an entire new facility online, so you need funds ongoing to support that. And primarily, those are funds associated with staffing, utilities, maintenance, technology, et cetera. So, Brian Brewer is going to talk to you through the financial side of that, and some of the timing of those, because you are going to be beginning the construction process before you're going to have a building to operate. So, we are, as a team, recommending that there is a stagger in that, that you first go forward with the borrowing, and that two years later would be the revenue limit increase. So, there'd be two steps to that process for your community. It aligns with when a building is available to operate. So, Brian, I think, is going to take it away now. If you want to flip to the next slide and then bring him up as well, that would be great.
I know, we watered the other.
Oh, you can't see Brian. That's sad. I think they need to see the slides though, Brian, don't you?
Yes, the slides are better.
Okay. Can we increase his volume a little bit?
Is that better?
Yes. Thank you, Brian.
All right. Good evening. Thank you for accommodating me virtually tonight. It's a family travel that prevented me from being there in person, so thank you for looking at the slide deck and not me. So, as Kit mentioned, there are two different questions. One is the referendum to borrow an amount not to exceed $44 million for the capital cost of the projects. And then, question two is the referendum to exceed the revenue limit by $950,000 for the estimated cost to operate the facility, once it comes online. So, you'll notice in the verbiage that you'll review later in the meeting, that question does not start until the 2024-25 school year. So, question one would start this coming school year. The plan is to phase the financing in over a two-year cycle, and then, in 24-25, as the building is nearing completion, that question two would start, which would then allow some funding to pay for some of those operational costs and staffing that would go along with operations of the new facility. So, this first slide summarizes in a grid format the estimated tax impact over and above what is the district is currently levying and collecting for the 21-22 school year. So, question one is the first set of numbers, and the estimate of increase per $1,000 of fair market property value is 25 cents per thousand, increase over that referendum debt levy. So, as you look at the sample home values, there's $100,000, $200,000, and $300,000. So, using the 25 cents per thousand, that would equate to $25 per year, or $2.09 per month for each $100,000 worth of property. Then, in the 24-25 school year, that darker blue section in the middle, the additional estimated 68 cents per thousand, on a $100,000 property, that would equate to about $68 per year, or $5.67 per month, for each $100,000 worth of property value. Such that, once both questions are implemented and the building is coming online, the total estimated cost of approving both question one and question two is 93 cents per thousand, or $93 per 100,000 each year, or $77.75 per month. So, these use estimates of borrowing cost for the two 20-year municipal borrowings or bond issues. We are estimating those at a 4.75%, and we're using a growth rate in the fair market values of the communities that the district serves of 1% going forward in 2023 and thereafter. To put that in perspective, the last couple of years, the district's property values, the communities with... the communities within the district has grown by 10%. And then prior to that, it was 5 and 6%. But as we look at it, we we're looking at over the long term, and, you know, the historical average over the last 15, 20 years is closer to 3%. So we're modeling this at 1% to try to be conservative as we're putting forward estimates to the voters. So and then with the interest rate, the 4.75 is also currently conservative. New 20-year school financings from the spring were finalized in in the high 3% or low 4% for a 20-year financing. So we have some planning cushion built into the estimates, assuming that interest rates may may move higher as we continue to work through the Federal Reserve adjusting their fiscal policy to offset some of the inflation figures that have been coming out over the last year. So with that, let's transition to the next slide. So this slide represents the legal debt capacity or the statutory debt capacity for a K through 12 school district in Wisconsin. That, by definition, is 10% of the fair market value of all of the properties within the the school district boundaries. So the the gray bar represents like using the full borrowing capacity of the district. The segments of the stacked bar represent the the principal reduction for each of the prior referendum authorizations that the district has implemented thus far in in the long-range facility plan. So the way to read this chart is is the purple segments of this principal reduction represents the debt related to the middle school projects that were authorized in in the 2008 referendum. So, you know, once the new debt is issued for the 2022 referendum, there will be about four to five years left on the the repayment of the 2008 debt. So each year, you're levying and paying down the outstanding debt as part of the annual budget process. The orange segment represents the remaining payments of the 2012 referendum for the elementary school building. And as of the implementation of of this referendum, there'll be about 10 years left on on the retirement of that debt. And then the the green portion of the stacked bar represents the 2018 authorization for the high school projects, and there'll there'll be about 15 years or so remaining on the debt retirement of of that authorization. So as we stand in 2022, with the those three authorizations already issued and outstanding, currently, the district is using about seven, about 33% of the legal capacity, so there's 77% remaining, which equates to a dollar value of 103 million of of legal borrowing capacity. So fast forward to 2024 and 25, once you've issued the new debt related to the 2022 referendum, let's let's look at 25 because that's the 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 max usage of the capacity. And at that point, you will have used about 46%. And then each year thereafter, you're as you levy and pay down debt, it it continues to reduce each year going forward. So at the maximum, you will have used less than half of your borrowing capacity, and you will have completed your long-range facility plan that you've been working on for the last 15 to 20 years at this point. Any questions on that while, or should I just keep moving through, and then we can ask questions at the end?
What is the board's preference? Do you want to ask questions?
Oh, yes.
Ask questions now?
Do you want to ask questions now?
I'm okay if you can guess it out and finish it.
Okay. So we're we're going to ask you to keep going, and then we'll ask questions at the end.
Yeah. Okay, that sounds good. And then we can refer back to slides as needed. So if we can transition to the next page. So this chart, there's a lot going on, but the bottom chart, for those of you that have been on the board for a number of years, this is a chart that I use to to give a perspective. You know, we get we're bombarded with the recent financial market news and the changes and what's going on. What this does is it's showing the last 30 years of municipal borrowing rates in general for a AAA-rated entity in issuing 20-year debt. And so I do this to to frame the time period in which you're you're seeking authorization to complete the long-range plan. As you as you see in the far right, you know, for essentially post Great Recession, we continued to establish new historical lows in this borrowing environment, long-term borrowing environment. And if I took this chart prior to 1992, I would have to go go back another two or three decades to get anywhere close to the borrowing environment that we've seen in the last 12, 13 years. And so I I put on here a yellow dashed line at at where the 2008 was originally borrowed, where the 2012 was originally borrowed, and where the 2018 was originally borrowed. And then you see the the dotted line going across the the bottom. It represents approximately where the market is today. So what we've been hearing in 2022 is that upper right box where rates transition from, you know, abnormally low rates coming out of the pandemic, which was purposeful by the fiscal policy from the Federal Reserve. They were actively trying to keep rates low. So most of 2022, rates have moved to higher levels, which, as you can see, is kind of more normalized from a historical perspective. So even with the increases throughout '22, you're you're not much, you're not higher than when you locked in and finalized financings for the for those three previous capital investments. And the other thing I would point out in that dotted box in the upper left is that going into each of those referendums, the the board and the and the administrative team was conservative with their estimates of of interest rates, and and each of those financings were were locked in lower than what was projected and estimated conservatively pre-referendum. And as as the market moved lower, the boards took advantage of that and refinanced to lower interest costs. Most recently, in December of 2021, refinancing a portion of the outstanding debt to save over $700,000. So in in aggregate, that that active management by this board and prior boards has resulted in of interest cost avoidance of over $8 million from what was communicated originally during those referendum information campaigns. So if we transition to the next slide, please. This represents how the new debt, which is represented by the blue portions of the stacked bar chart, would be paid off around the the retirement of the existing authorizations, which is represented by the black portions of the bar chart. So with that that growth in the in the property values of the school district, the Tanya and Tasha have actively been paying down and refinancing debt to position the district to be able to layer in the new investment in the new facility, try in a in an effort to minimize the increase over what you which are currently estimated to pay. So for the 2223 budget estimate, the referendum debt portion of that levy is about $3.20. And using the assumptions that I described described earlier, once you layer in the new $44 million in in payments each year, the estimate is that it would step up to the $3.45, which would represent the increase over over current payments and current levy of 25 cents. So this is more graphical and easier to consume, and it it shows how the debts, how the debt payments would be repaid over the next 21 years. The next slide shows you the detail. It's hard to read on the screen, but it this is the working document that Tanya and Tasha and I and my team will continue to update. But it gives you an idea of, you know, how there's there's two financings planned, one in 20, early 2023, and then one in early 2024, with the majority of the financing being locked in in the first borrowing. Ultimately, some of some of that is to take advantage of of market rates where they are, and and some of it is to the realization that you won't be able to spend 44 million right away as you're designing and taking bids on the on the projects. So it's a balance of when you need the funds with the ability to lock in some of the long-term borrowing interest rates. So ultimately, we're we're working to manage that mill rate increase and then level out the the future payments for all of the capital plan debt at about a 4, 4.9 million dollar annual payment. This final slide represents layering in the the additional operational authority into onto the revenue limit, starting in the 2425 school year. And that 950,000 would represent an estimate of 68 cents. Given that this is part of the operational budget, this will continue to change each year once as new BNEO budgets are approved. You know, but this gives a gives you a current, you know, under current state law, what is what is the estimate of that additional funding to operate the additional facility? So with that, I would entertain questions.
Does the board have any questions? I I personally do. For the updated estimate tax impact, that that slide, I think it's slide 14 of our package that shows question one, the rates, question two, the rates, and then total combined. What, how did that, has that changed since the May presentation, and if so, why? Has those numbers changed?
Yeah, so we we're continuing to update as Tasha and Tanya are updating the budget estimates and what what you're building for the 2223, you know, fiscal year and and budget. There are more data points coming in the next 45 days, but this is based on the the latest estimates and and your active debt prepayment or debt repayment of the previous three referendum authorizations. So, you know, with that, we've updated the interest rates to be higher, and we've reflected that you're paying down more debt, which creates that room to to layer in the new 44 million and and interest.
Okay. I would say Brian's been a a great partner as Tasha and I work with him. We're constantly looking for ways to either save money by prepaying debt or or structuring things differently. I would liken it much to when you try to put an extra payment on your on the mortgage of your house, and the interest that you save by doing so on the front side of things, you know, helps you on the backside of things. So that's what we're constantly looking for opportunities, and and Brian has been very strategic with us, which is one of the major reasons why we've we've seen some changes.
So the overall updated tax estimated impact is lower now than what was presented in May?
Correct, much lower.
Okay. And then also on for for this slide, hypothetical referendum financing illustration, which would be 18 of our packet. If we would take, if if, do you see any trends that we would be recommend or that you would recommend us taking out the full 44 million at one point if the referendum passes? And if so, how would that impact the the overall mill rate?
Possibly. So one of the benefits of splitting the the financings is you have 20 years from the time you borrow the original issue. So by splitting and utilizing the second borrow, at least a portion of it is being paid in 2044, which if we did a single borrow in 2023, you would have to pay that 4 million eight-ish off in those first 20 years. So that would, the only reason we would be able to do that within these tax impact estimates is if the estimated interest rates that we're using are more conservative than what is actually available at the time we go to market. So that is certainly something we will continue to update as as the referendum approaches and and is approved. We will be updating you with an updated plan with then current actual market rates late this year and presenting a an updated plan of finance.
Does the board have any more questions for Brian?
I do.
Does the, Andrea?
Hi, thank you. So just a question about that you said the for the highest debt capacity would be would be the 25, getting 25, or it's 46%. Is that, just wondering, like, is that a good, good place to be? Is that typical? Like, what what are other districts, what kind of situations are other districts in with their debt? I'm just wondering how we're doing overall with other districts that you see.
Yeah, that's a, it's a great question, and and really, it's it's relative to where a school district. So each of the 422 school districts, and I think it's 368 of them are K through 12, each of them, you know, that are K through 12 or would apply that 10% capacity. And so the Lake Mills area school district, current total taxable value is about 1.3 billion, which then means that your capacity is about 130 million. There are districts that are much, much smaller in, you know, total property value within the boundaries of the district, and so that 10% is a smaller capacity number. So if they're doing an addition or or a new K through 12 facility, they use up a a higher percentage of the capacity at that time in their history, right? There are, there are many districts that are at the time in their history where their facilities are set for now, and they've they've kind of worked their way through their long-term capital plan and are at very low percentage usage or zero percentage usage of their capacity. So, I mean, it's it's a, it's a time and place evaluation, and, you know, looking at your set of circumstances, you've accomplished three major investments over the last 15 years, 14 years. And this final question in 2022 completes what you've been mapping out as a long-term plan. So to accomplish that and still have half of your borrowing capacity that really you don't have any large-scale needs on the horizon in in the coming years, which then, you know, as you see on that chart, little by little, as you pay down the principal, you're freeing up additional capacity for those future needs whenever that occurs, right? So so I think you're in a great position financially because you've been actively paying down and refinancing. So you've positioned yourself to be able to complete the long-term capital plan and still be fiscally sound and conservative.
Okay, thank you. I think that's good for us to think about, too, going forward if state funding doesn't increase going forward, and we need, we're in, you know, tighter situation. So I think that's, thank you, that's good to know. And then the other thing I was wondering about, so that $3.45 of the mill, that's of the total mill rate, and that's just the referendum debt. So like, our mill rate last year was $8, $8.41 per thousand. So that 3.45 is just the referendum debt. So that three forty-five is just the referendum debt?
Correct, that is the portion of that eight dollars and forty-one cents that is, uh, currently budgeted to go towards debt retirement.
Okay. So I was looking back at the history. In twenty-fifteen, twenty-sixteen, our mill rate was ten dollars and fifty-four cents and it's continually gone down. And then I, I think it's just important to bring up too that, you know, other districts around, um, you know, Johnson Creek has a mill rate of eleven dollars and fifty-nine cents, Cambridge nine dollars and twelve cents, Deerfield ten dollars and thirty-five cents. So looking at how we're paying off the debt and managing, you know, if the referendum does pass, managing that, I think we're in a good, we're still, our taxpayers are still in a good, um, situation. And for, for the school district and for the services that they're getting and, and all this. So I just wanted to kind of bring that to the attention too of the board, that our mill rate is very, very low even with all this new, um, possibilities.
Correct.
All right. It, is there any other questions for, from the board for the rest of the presentation team, EUA or Fendorf?
You know, just a question on, um, uh, from a financing perspective, when, when ultimately, um, should the referendums pass? And, uh, things go out to bid? Is, is the point at which it goes out to bid and a bid's accepted, um, is that the point at which we, uh, really know our financial obligation? Uh, are the, what other, are, are there, um, many changes or variations after we ha- have it out to bid? I don't know.
Can answer that. So as far as, if I'm getting the question correct, as far as your obligation, so it's the forty-four-million dollars is what you're going to be asking for? And then as we project and as the design is being completed over the next year, we'll be watching where the design comes in, looking at the current numbers. And then on bid day, we'll have an idea of where they actually come in and where it is on the forty-four-million-dollar range. And so if it's a little bit under, then we, I'll come and we're a little bit happy that we were underneath. And if it's over, well, that's not the idea.
November eighth, then the project would immedi- immediately begin, uh, fully and will launch the design process. As we, as you all know, as you've been through this before, um, pre-referendum work is planning and estimating and lacking in, um, the work that we can deliver with the budget that we've communicated to the community. So the scope of the work, what are we building and how much do we need to cover that cost? But the building itself is not designed until the community says it's okay to borrow those funds. So when that project is given the green light by your community, Eric and our team from EUA begins the actual full design process. And we'll begin that immediately in November and we'll be working heavily with staff, district staff. We did this with elementary school and the high school as well. It's really critical to have that staff engagement in the design process. And so we'll be working through that. The design process for a building, a new building like this does take approximately a year. So we are, we are going through the process of designing and engineering the building and there's multiple phases of design that evolve that. And as Peter mentioned, we're continually checking in with Fendorf. They're evaluating that project to make sure that we are on budget and we're adjusting as needed. So when we are ready by the end of two thousand twenty-three to begin to go out to bid, publicly bidding all of the work for the, all the various subcontractors that can benefit from the project, um, we will know where we stand with the budget and then construction can begin. And that construction on this project, we anticipate will take us through the summer of two thousand twenty-five. So we want to make sure that we're clear that we're approving a referendum potentially, if your voters support that, in November of two thousand twenty-two. But it would be the summer of two thousand twenty-five that we'd be turning that building over. It's what we call it to you as a district to move in, to make sure that we're getting ready for students to come back at the end of August, students and staff at the August of two thousand twenty-five. So that's when all of that transition would happen with the grade levels, right? We have to have the new building open before we can shift those grade levels. So from a design and construction perspective, it's important to understand this doesn't happen overnight. Sometimes we see referenda, you know, expectations are a little out of line. So we try to communicate, why isn't the new building built, um, within a year? It, we, we, we don't have approval to start design until your voters give that to us. So that's the first step. Um, I think just a few things just for framing. Um, you're actually going to be working through three separate resolutions tonight that your bond council, which is a separate independent group, um, works with your legal counsel to develop the ballot language that will officially go before voters and helps the district work through everything that's related to the elections and, and making sure your clerks and all of your municipalities have everything they need. So you have three ballot resolutions. One is to actually go to referendum itself. It's an election resolution that says that you as a board are agreeing to put questions before the voters. So you'll have that. Then you will have question number one. Question one is for the bond issuance, to approve, um, and get approval for borrowing the funds to build the new school. So as, as you work through the ballot, voters will have the opportunity to vote on question one. As an independent question, they can vote yes or no on, on the bonds associated with funding the construction of that project. So you'll be voting on that. And then there's a se- the second question is the ongoing operational question to fund the ongoing, um, support of that building or exceeding the revenue limit. So your, your voters, when they come to the ba- when they get the ballot, will have the opportunity to vote independently, yes or no, on each of them. They are independent standalone questions. So people could fundamentally say yes to one and no to the other or vice versa. You know, whatever, we, obviously they go together intrinsically. So we're, I think as you go forward, one of the things you want to make sure you are clearly communicating is that it, there are two separate questions to be voting on so that they understand that. So it'll be a big part of our communication as well because that's new for you here in Lake Mills to have two questions on the ballot. So just, I think, last but not least, um, next steps, as you take action tonight, which is your focus, um, we are then going to shift into, uh, referendum communications, information and outreach. And it's, it's a really critical part of this process. We know this is a, um, significant investment for your community and the community has a right to information. So our job is to help you communicate those facts to make sure that we are informing the public so they can make good, solid decisions when they vote. And we are going to actually have a special workshop devoted to communication and we're going to be working through our entire detailed communications plan. That's going to be coming up on Wednesday, August seventeenth, six o'clock. We're going to be back. My, um, partner, uh, Kristin Millsna from Fendorf, she and I will be here together, um, collaborating. We're working closely with Megan and Tanya and Tasha, um, to make sure that we're covering all the bases. How do people in Lake Mills get information? How can we reach them? So we're going to be talking about the plan. We're going to be talking about direct mail. We're going to be talking about hosting information meetings and tours. Opportunity for people to come and ask questions directly to the team you have here. Brian will be there as well. Um, looking for opportunities to connect with and through the community, through the Lake Mills leader. We know that is a strong community newspaper that people use here to get information. So we've, we've been submitting articles all summer and we're going to continue to do that. Uh, the website will be a critical resource for people. Um, some people want information up here, some people want to get down in the weeds and that's the website. The website will allow you to really get into some of those FAQ, frequently asked questions, one-off things that you're thinking about at three in the morning, you can get the information. So, um, we will obviously be also opp- offering opportunities to what we call Take the Show on the Road, um, which is Tanya and Tasha and the team, um, talking to your community, answering questions and, and just being, um, resources. So we're going to talk more about that on August seventeenth. So now that, with that, are there any other questions about the proposed plan that we can help you with before you guys move into taking formal action?
Just to clarify, um, it's my understanding we could actually never combine these resolutions. They have to be two separate resolutions.
Correct.
Just for everybody to know.
Yep. Yeah.
Right. By state statute, yes, they have to be two separate questions.
Yeah.
Are there any other questions from board members for Brian Brewer or EUA or Fendorf team? Then I will open it for, to the public. This is in addition to the public comment period that we have coming up as the next agenda item. For clarification only on any of the slides or information presented tonight, does the public have any questions for Brian Brewer, EU, the EUA or Fendorf team? Yes. Yeah, I think you probably should. And we will, we will limit this time to ten minutes for overall public questions.
Overall, okay.
Yeah.
Ten minutes worth of questions. Um, on the slide that went over the mill rates and how to pay the loan and, and whatnot, is that based off of this, the current population? Because obviously the school is getting built and going to be partially not filled for many years to come because we're, yep, sorry, because we're, uh, I'm trying to look at them too. Um, I'm planning on city growth. So I know city council has their own growth plans and development plans. So I want to know if the mill rate, um, on the slide to pay the loan is just based off a current population and that's the rate? Or does it include the, the growth anticipated to fill the school?
Brian can address that.
Okay. Okay, Brian?
So the, um, the estimates over the repayment period build in one percent growth in property values of the, all of the collective properties within the municipalities that make up the Lake Mills Area School District. So we are, uh, utilizing a growth factor in there. However, um, you know, as I mentioned, the, the last five years have averaged closer to seven to eight percent growth. And then over a fifteen, twenty-year, uh, time period, it's, it's closer to like three percent. So we're trying to be conservative with how much growth we're estimating in there. Um, and that's, and that's property value change. It's, you asked the question about population specifically, then so there, there are two different metrics. Uh, but I think the growth in population is, is also driving some of the growth in, um, the property value, uh, within the communities.
Property value percent that it goes up by is just based off of my house is worth this? And as things grow, you know, it, it itself gets worth more, not necessarily talking about people moving in, purchasing properties or making or building properties that pay out.
Correct, it's, it's both of those things. So you have an existing property that becomes worth more as there's more demand for properties in the area. And then there's, uh, new development that occurs with new population as well. So that would also, uh, aid in the growth of the, the property value of the, you know, communities within the district.
And do we know roughly with, um, the added building and school, the population growth it takes to fill that school? Because it won't be full to start with, it'll take a few years. Because with the change in capacity for the school, we've, we've bumped this up by like six to eight years ahead.
That's not a Brian question, that's a Eric question. About capacity.
So is the question, when will the school be at capacity?
Basically, what our population is needed to make the school at capacity? Because obviously you can see what our population is now, what our school and student rate is, you can kind of compare those numbers. So I would assume somewhere along the way that somebody would compare what growth needs to be acquired in, in Lake Mills to, to fill that school to meet where that school is at full capacity. Because it's not going to be full. If that building was open today, it would not be full capacity, the students.
So MD Roffers provided enrollment projections
Okay.
for the school district that go through the twenty-thirty-five, thirty-six school year.
Mm-huh.
And the new building would be comfortably below capacity at that timeframe.
Mm-huh.
Predicting elementary growth beyond fifteen years is like, you know, predicting the weather thirty days from now. It's, it's, it's very cloudy.
Yeah.
So fifteen years is kind of the end of what enrollment projections are. What we typically recommend to school districts is maybe every five years do another enrollment projection. So that you're always fifteen years or ten years out.
Little different. So my question is more of the relationship between the current enrollment and our current population so that I can kind of tell when the enrollments get to this number where the school's full, what, you know, in turn is the relationship to the population. So our current population in Lake Mills, you know, hypoth- I don't know the exact number with the sign says in the way in is sixty-five-hundred and equals this enrollment, like a percent.
I would recommend.
I, I don't know if there's always a correlation because sometimes you'll see, especially with the apartments that are being built, a lot of times those are single-family, uh, you know, single people that are moving in. So sometimes that, the population growth of a city doesn't always correlate to the population growth in a school. And sometimes it's the opposite. It just depends on who is moving into your community. Is it a family that has kids? Do they have, you know, two or three kids? Or, um, you know, kind of like when you see downtown Madison, all of the, the buildings, you know, they've, they've projected that's mostly single people moving in and living there. So, you know, like a city of Madison's, you know, enrollment or population growth is growing, but not necessarily, does that always correlate to kids in school? So.
Okay. So the growth that is projected is just based off of the numbers of students and student trends?
Right.
Not so much any type of relationship would echo population growth?
Correct, yeah. So, yeah, not the population overall of Lake Mills. It was just specific to kids, um, coming into the school district.
Because that'd be interesting knowing a little bit if there would be some configuration with that relationship. Because obviously, even if people don't have s- kids in school, they still pay property taxes. So it's still relevant to the population relationship between student enrollment and the town because it's going to still be income generating essentially whether they have kids or not. So I'm just kind of curious, you know, I, I kind of, the reason I'm asking this is I look at that chart and it seems pretty, like I said, conservative on the type of growth that is projected that, you know, that perhaps the mill rate could be incorporating a little bit more growth that's realistic. But that's just my opinion.
I don't know if the question you're asking, Brian, you could clarify this, is more, um, you're, you're kind of projecting more of the tax base, correct, Brian? When you look at population growth, so obviously when you've got a wider tax base, that translates typically to little lower taxes for property owners versus living in a community where there's not a strong tax base, meaning businesses and things like that, then more of those taxes fall on, um, homeowners instead.
Yeah.
Would you say that's correct, Brian? Or not?
Uh, yes, in general. I mean, so you are correct, we, we are trying to be conservative with forward projections, uh, primarily because you, you are, you know, in the middle of some strong growth, right? And so I don't want to take the recency effect, um, and, and roll that forward. I'd much rather lay out estimates that are based on more conservative growth and that if you continue it, you know, near ten percent growth year over year, or even five percent or even three percent, the, the mill rate estimates we're, we're projecting will, could come in lower, right? So I'd, I'd rather that than projecting at five percent and then, you know, telling you that it's a, a lower increase over current. And then that growth slows down in the coming years and, um, the, the mill rate that, that you're experiencing is higher. So it's, it's really just taking a lot, there, there are a lot of variables that go into these, um, estimates over time. Um, and that, and that's why, you know, we found it best and, and the district has utilized in the previous three conservative planning estimates and then consistently come in better than what they communicated during the referendum.
Are there any other, uh, question, clarif- clarifying questions? Uh, moving on for, I think, for time? Yes, yes. Why don't you come?
I, um, have followed this from the beginning and I have the, uh, original thing that you sent out, the survey. Um, so the other day, when I saw that you were going to do the referendum or thought and it was going to be forty-four million, I picked up what you were referring to with the per year for question one and per year for question two at borrowing thirty-six, you know, million and then having seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand. Well, and I think since I don't understand it and I heard your explanation, I think that's one thing that you're really going to have to address to the public, especially people who have kept this because it's right here. So I'm having a hard time and I don't know if you want to explain it now again or just wait to figure out how to do it to the general public. But it's very curious when you're borrowing, um, seven, eight-million dollars more and two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars a year more forever and we're borrowing it at one percent more, that it went down from ninety-three cents per one-hundred-thousand. per 100,000, from, from 100, excuse me, from a dollar 10 to the 93. So that, you know, all these math, mathematics stuff, that is curious to me. So I know you explained it like paying the extra for your mortgage, that helps. But I'm curious, why wasn't that reflected in this original thing survey? And then the other question is, the other, and it's taken from this also, when you look, the reasons for the new school were on chart D, which you showed, due to additional 4K and community growth, the elementary school will be over capacity. So I, you know, I actually talked to somebody on the staff a couple of times about this. I'm a former educator and you just have questions. This one that we got with the survey results showed the elementary school is over capacity due to the addition of 4K, the community growth, but it's also the district goals to reduce the classroom size. And that was the first time that myself and many people, I think in the community, heard about that. So I think that's another thing that really needs to be addressed in terms of, I don't know, you don't have to answer these questions now, but for transparency because some people do keep things. And then the other thing that I just have a little bit of an issue with is somebody said, I think it was UA Architects, that a lot of communities, you know, are bringing the 4K into the schools, the district buildings. I happen to have grandkids and have been very involved in their lives and those communities, many of the 4K and the preschools, you know, are outside of the, of the classroom, of, of the school district buildings. And they've been wonderful preschools and nursery school, preschool and 4K. And so, you know, I think that's another question that really has to be addressed because, just because the kid, and I've read all the reasons why you want to do this, but, you know, there are people who, like me, who have a lot of questions. And I think you, it, it isn't absolutely imperative to have the little kids in with the, in one of the elementary schools. And, and there, there can be also some disadvantages to have the little ones in with the big ones. So those are just comments that I've had from saving the things that, and I think other people may have saved these and they're, they're questions because they're right on here that are different from the first to the second and then hearing the answers tonight. So that's just my two cents.
I appreciate those comments because as we have been working through the communication plan, we've been trying to communicate through various avenues. Some of it's in print copies, some of it, like Kit said, is through the newspaper, through board meetings, through community workshops. And I think it's like condensing all of that because with, you know, in my mind, I'm thinking like, holy cow, we had like three or four community workshop sessions where we talked through all of that. But if you didn't attend one of those and you're relying on that, then, and this is the next form of communication you get, I can see why there feels like a disconnect between that communication. So that, that helps us as well is that
Right.
those direct mailings are very valuable.
Because what's written in here should be, I mean, it's obviously transparent, but it should be consistent with each thing that goes out to the community and...
Preliminary, that was a year ago, that survey, so it's evolving.
Right. But, yeah.
So, so to be fair, the, the change in the tax impact is, is very new within about the last week, week and a half. So that was information too, that a lot of us were just hearing. And, and I think when you look at overall district finances and, and you're working through, you know, an 18, 19 million dollar budget, when those opportunities come back to be able to prepay debt and things like that, it does shift things dramatically and that opportunity actually did just come up within last three weeks, I think, so...
It's a good thing because when I, when I saw it last night, I thought, well, if these are the numbers for the 36 million at 3% versus the 750 versus the new things, those, I thought, all these numbers are going to go up and that's not good. And then you're saying that they went down. So I, I guess I'm just saying, maybe you need to explain in a, in a real easy way for people to understand why it's going down. Nobody likes, nobody likes a surprise.
Oh, we, yeah, I appreciate that.
So that's my...
Yeah, thank you.
In the interest of time, I think what we'll, what we should do is if there's any other clarifying questions, we will definitely address all questions and either stick around afterwards or at future sessions. But if there's any other clarifying questions that...
Do we just have the, the one more?
Just the one more? Okay.
Do, can you come up to the?
Yeah.
Just because it's being recorded, it's easier.
I'm just curious how confident the district is that enrollment is going to keep increasing because, I mean, countrywide millennials aren't having kids at the rate that baby boomers did or Gen Xers even. Who knows what Gen Z's will do? Then also, the public's, I guess, opinion on public schools kind of souring, to put it kindly. So many parents are choosing to homeschool such as ourselves. A lot of people are going to private schools. And if the state moves to pinning money towards the student and not the district, what are your thoughts? I mean, I would just think that that would further decrease the enrollment of the public schools. So how confident are you that enrollment's going to increase and then you're not going to be left with a $44 million empty building?
Yeah, and I think that's always a challenge because, you know, much like Eric said, you know, you try to predict as much as, as you can, you know, with confidence, but there's always, there's things that happen. The one, I think, thing that Lake Mills has going for us is, you know, the growth that we're seeing outside of Dane County, as you can see, is, is the bubble is starting to widen out this way. So that way, I think we've got more opportunity for student growth than if we were a district, you know, in northern Wisconsin. I, I might not be as confident as far as growth because you haven't seen the trends, you know, in those areas as much as we have here. But, you know, I would say right now, we're pretty confident in the fact that already that elementary building is, is over capacity. We, we are out of room, not only there, but really the middle school is also getting, you know, fairly tight as well. So right now, the projections are looking favorable for us and our goal is to provide the best education possible and I know what's out there with public schools, but, but we are really working hard to make sure that Lake Mills is a destination spot for families who want to raise kids and send them to the public school system.
Okay. All right. Seeing no other clarifying questions, we will, let me go back to here, move, we will move on.
Oh. Can we, can we come up to the mic, please?
Easy question. The 950,000 of the second resolution? Is that just, we, we just assume we're going to automatically go over budget?
So in prior board meetings, we've worked through a spreadsheet of what those costs amount to. So as you open up a fairly large building, we have an itemization of what those costs would be attributed to and much like we said in the presentation, I mean, even just utility costs alone, maintenance of those.
Yeah, but it's saying, it wants us to approve for ad infinitum, going over budget, 950,000. It's not going over 44 million. It's going over the budget. I'm assuming that means the annual budget of the district.
Correct.
And that's for operating costs.
Correct. So...
So, so I just want to make sure, I just want to make sure I get this straight. So our school district does, goes through the budget process just, just for looks because they don't stay within the budget and don't plan to. I don't understand that.
There'll be increased expenses due to the fact that we will have a, a whole nother, a fourth building here, so...
Yeah, I realize the fourth building, whether it's a fourth building or just the three. This, this mindset of always going over budget, I don't, why don't, why doesn't the district work to stay within the budget?
That's why a whole nother topic of conversation due to the lack of state funding right now that we've seen across, every district is in that situation. So that, that would be, I would be happy to have that conversation with you at a later time, but...
Well, it's not a conversation with me. You want a referendum on this. You want voters to approve 950,000 every year ad infinitum over budget. My first question to that would be what budget? So you're going to increase the budget every year and then you want another 950,000 just because? That extra 950,000 that will be authorized every year, three buildings or four, is not going to be a motivator for the school district to stay within the budget?
And I, I just want to clarify also that, that 950,000 is a maximum amount that we're allowed to levy for. So if for some reason that entire amount wasn't needed, we, we wouldn't levy taxes just to levy taxes and, and do nothing with them. So that is for the exact needs of the district. So if, I'm assuming that...
So that would increase the mill rate every year? No.
Well, you'd have to go back to the slide. So if that 950,000 increases the mill rate by the, I think it was a 68 cents per thousand. So that standalone question was for just that particular...
I'd also like to add that the district has not gone over budget in the past. I'd have to find out how many years, but I want to say at least five years we've, we've added or stayed at balance. So we haven't been going over. And this is in, this operating referendum would be, and I, and I can post out the, we put out a ad in the paper that outlines the additional staffing. So about 900, or I'm sorry, about 500, 750 of that is staffing alone. That is extra people to, to run and, and staff that building. That is not part of what we've, what we've budgeted before. So it's above and beyond anything that's been in our operating in the past. Excuse me. So we haven't been going over, but, but this would put us over should we, should we, because we still get that same revenue limit that we've always had.
I would just ask that this whole worldview that school districts seem to have with this mindset of, oh, we can, we can run over because, you know, we can always explain this or that or the other thing, which is what all this is. And I'm, I'm very familiar with all of this.
All right. Well, thank you, thank you so much. So is there...
Try to, try to control that.
Okay. All right. All right. Seeing no other public comment, we will move on. Has there anyone signed up for additional public comment? All right. Moving on to the consent agenda. This month's consent agenda includes the approval of the following. The July 11 regular meeting minutes, the July 25 Finance Personnel Committee proceedings, the August 1 Special Board Meeting Minutes, July Treasures Report and Vouchers and Invoices, and the Personnel Report. Is there any items that need to be separated out by a request of any board member? Hearing none, is there a motion?
I move the board approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the combined consent agenda? Any of the consent agendas? It's good to hear the, from the person, a comment, good to hear the Personnel Report, hearing that other districts are short-staffed and are having trouble finding teachers, that we only have three open positions?
Right, and we're, we're interviewing this week. Our ability to recruit top-notch teachers has been phenomenal.
Super. All right. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, I would like a roll call vote on the motion.
Brianna Beslik?
Aye.
Andrea Graham?
Aye.
Ken Imers?
Aye.
Kirk Lund?
Aye.
Amy Litcher?
Aye.
All right, moving on to 6A action items. The resolution is, okay, the, this is a initial resolution from a motion for authorizing the general obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed 44 million. Is there a motion?
I, I move the board approve the resolution authorizing general obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed 40 more, 44 million as presented.
I'll second.
Is there any discussion on the resolution? And clarify, is this the resolution for the new building, the 44 million for the new building? Correct. Okay. And this is a resolution for putting it on the ballot in November for the public to decide? Correct. Okay. Hearing no other discussion?
Andrea Graham?
Aye.
Ken Imers?
Aye.
Kirk Lund?
Aye.
Brianna Beslik?
Aye.
Amy Litcher?
Aye.
All right. For the next resolution for this school district to exceed the revenue limit of 950,000 beginning in the 24, 25 school year to support the operations of the new building, this will appear, if, if this is moved and approved, this question will appear in the ballot in November if approved. Do I have a motion?
I move the board approve the resolution to authorize the school district budget to exceed the revenue limit by 950,000 for reoccurring purposes as presented.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? And again, I will ask the clarification, this is to put the, on the ballot for the public to decide in November?
Correct.
Okay. Is there any other just questions or, questions or discussion? All right, I will ask for a roll call vote.
Ken Imers?
Aye.
Kirk Lund?
Aye.
Brianna Beslik?
Aye.
Andrea Graham?
Aye.
Amy Litcher?
Aye.
The next action item is, is attached and it's, the attached resolution authorizes the board to proceed with the election for the referendum and it would be this November 22, 2022, so...
Correct, and that will not appear on the ballot. That, that third one will not appear on the ballot.
Okay.
Got it.
So I'll move the board approve the resolution for referendum election on the questions of the approval of an initial resolution authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds in an amount not to see, to exceed 44 million and a resolution authorizing the school district budget to exceed the revenue limit by 950,000 for reoccurring purposes as presented.
I'll second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Is there any questions or discussion on the motion?
I just would like to say, I think we have done an amazing job, Wendy and Tasha, both with our budget in the, the previous years. And I think that is a good factor of, of what you are going to project to us in the future and you are not spending money willy-nilly. These are our needs. I mean, there are students here who we need to serve as a public school and it's our mission statement, you know, we serve all students. We open the door to anyone and I think that that is truly important because we have those needs now and they're projected for their future. And so I think as a parent, as a former teacher, you know, as a property owner, this, this is going to help me because this makes our community better. People look at the schools within their community when they move here, no matter the age they are, because that, that shows the, the grounding of, of the community, you know, and their importance and what they value. So I, I truly think that this is something as a board that is important for us and, which is why I feel it's important to put it on our, our community members to vote.
All right. Is there any other comments, discussion or questions? All right, hearing none, I'll ask for a roll call vote.
Kirk Lund?
Aye.
Brianna Beslik?
Aye.
Andrea Graham?
Aye.
Ken Imers?
Aye.
Amy Litcher?
Aye.
All right, moving on to the policy approval for four-one-three-nine staff discipline revision. Any, Tanya, can you go just brief overview?
Correct. Um, we were doing some handbook revisions and within, um, our part three of the handbook revisions that refer to support staff, part of that is support staff discipline. And our language mentioned, um, discipline, um, that was arbitrary and capricious, so we wanted to remove that language. So that is the revision to that policy.
Is there a motion to approve policy one-four-three-nine revisions?
I'll move the board approve policy four-one-three-nine staff discipline revision.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or discussion on the revisions?
I just wanted to share that I, um, emailed Tanya and I just said that normally we often see a first reading, second reading within our meetings. And I clarified that when we talked about it, our first financial personnel committee, that was our first reading, so then this would be our second reading, which is why we're voting on it.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any other questions or discussion? All right, hearing none, I ask for a roll call vote on the action item.
Brianna Beslik?
Aye.
Andrea Graham?
Aye.
Ken Imers?
Aye.
Kirk Lund?
Aye.
Amy Litcher?
Aye.
All right, moving on, the LMASD employee handbook revisions, um, the atta-, there, there are several attachments. Tanya, if you'd like to go through them.
Yeah, we've just, you've discussed this at committees, meetings, um, twice already. We've, um, communicated this with staff, and the handbook revisions actually benefit the staff, um, sick leave policy, reducing the, the increments in which staff have to take sick leaves, so reducing that down to only an hour increment. Um, we specified when we're talking about unpaid leaves of absence, it just said, you know, forty-five days' notice. We really want to clarify that that was forty-five calendar days because sometimes there's confusion between school days and calendar days. Uh, and, and probably the, the other major thing that we really talked about was, um, eliminating appendix X or appendix nine, um, the professional educators compensation system. So we were, um, really making our, our teachers do a lot of extra work just to get an annual raise. So, um, you know, we, we, teachers ask us to take something off their plate constantly. So we, we're removing that extra work outside of the school day that normally would be done in summer or on the weekends, and so that, um, that they're able to get a raise just because everybody else gets a raise. So, um, so that, that will actually save us a lot of, um, work at the district office as well as far as record keeping and, and things like that. There just wasn't a need to do that any longer. Um, and then, uh, finally, we, we did some changes in our district organizational chart. So with, um, newer administrators coming in, we, we moved supervision of, um, some of our middle managers and some of our other staff around to where it made sense and, and at the strengths of, of our, our, our new administrators. So not, um, not any major changes, just some minor tweaks to the handbook language, I'd say.
Okay. Any, any questions? Do I have a motion?
I'll move the board approve the employee handbook revisions as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Um, is this, this, the items that we discussed during the Personnel and Finance Committee?
Correct. That has not changed.
The one question I had was on page one oh nine, the small little gray number there. Um, the attorney had suggested just some verbiage replacement, the first calendar year of employment, um, in that one red section. And just I wanted to clarify that that's what we were choosing to go with then, with his suggestion there.
Right now, I was under the understanding that we would take the revisions that he was suggesting, um, in its entirety.
Okay.
All right, are there any other questions? All right, hearing none, if there's been a, a motion and a second, and can I ask for a roll call vote on the motion?
Andrea Graham?
Aye.
Ken Imers?
Aye.
Kirk Lund?
Aye.
Brianna Beslik?
Aye.
Amy Litcher?
Aye.
Okay, the six F approval of gifts. Is there a motion for the approval of gifts?
I'll move that the board accept the following gifts and always thank our generous donors for all that they contribute to help our students and programs of our Lake Mills area school district. Um, our first one is a hundred and fifty dollar donation from the Tyranina Ladies Club to the Elementary School Garden. The next is a three hundred dollar donation from the Tyranina Ladies Club to the Elementary Schools Playworks Program. The next is a five hundred dollar donation from Cape for school supplies for students. The next is a four thousand donation from the PTO for elementary teachers' wish list items that included chair pouches for students, books, and classroom activity supplies. And the final donation was, um, of eight thousand, seven hundred, twenty dollars and seven cents from Sue Darsh Memorial for a music library filing system at the high school.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, it's, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any questions or discussion? Other than we think definitely the donors, the, the donors of small, large, and everywhere in between to the Lake Mills area school district and are happy, very, very happy with this community, so. All right, hearing no other comments, I will ask for a roll call vote.
Ken Imers?
Aye.
Kirk Lund?
Aye.
Brianna Beslik?
Aye.
Andrea Graham?
Aye.
Amy Litcher?
Aye.
All right, uh, that's the last of our action items. We will move on to any future agenda items for upcoming boards, meetings.
I am so excited that September is going to be a, a student-focused agenda. It's going to focus on our school goals. You'll get to hear from the principals as, um, they report out how the school year, um, got started and, and really there's, um, besides working towards, um, referendum, there's not really pressing issues at this time. So I think it'll be a very joyous board meeting.
All right, any other agenda items, requested agenda items for future boards? All right, then, we, well, we, I personally thank the presenters from tonight, um, for all the information, and I, I thank personally the questions from the board and from the public. And I know for the referendum that will be on the ballot now, I can say that, in November, um, there will be many, many, many oppor- opportunities for questions and information presented and meetings and so on and so forth. So we definitely ask the public to still be a part of this and, and stay a part of this, and we hope to hear from the, more of the public, more public questions as we go forward into November. All right, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll move to adjourn.
Second.
All right, I can think this is a voice vote. Do we have a, a voice vote? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? All right, we are adjourned.